Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, March twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is six thirty-five. My name is Michael Paylor, designee of this hearing for the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, or MCDOT. Here with me this evening to conduct this public hearing is Ms. Maricela Corova, Acting Division Chief of the Division of Transportation Engineering for the Montgomery County's DOT, Mr. Dan Sheridan, Chief of Planning and Design of DTE, Ms. Yasemin Asmely, Project Manager for the MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Segment Three Project in DTE, and Ms. T.R. McCray, Chief of Property Acquisition Section of DTE. Ms. Corova will be providing the information and details regarding the proposed project. Tonight's hearing is being recorded. To obtain a copy of the recording, please contact Ms. Lori Main, whose contact information is posted below on this virtual platform. Please note, your video camera is turned off by default this evening. To reduce the bandwidth of this meeting, we request that you please do not turn your camera on. Likewise, your microphones have been muted. Once the testimony portion of this hearing begins, those who have signed up to testify will be called on and unmuted when it is their turn to speak. If you have not signed up to testify but wish to do so, please raise your hand by clicking on the status icon at the top of the screen. It is the icon that looks like a person raising their hand. You may click on the drop-down menu portion of the icon and select Raised Hand. You may raise your hand at any time during the testimony portion. We will call on you to provide your oral testimony and unmute your microphone when it is your turn to speak. Written testimony and comments may be submitted as well and will be considered with the same weight as oral testimony. Following the testimony portion of this hearing, we will hold a question and answer session. You may raise your hand to ask a question, or you are welcome to type your question in the Q and A chat box at the bottom right corner of your screen. Thank you. Tonight's hearing is being held pursuant to Section forty-nine fifty-three of the Montgomery County Code. The purpose of a public hearing is to obtain testimony regarding the potential project to assist in determining if the project is in the best interest of the public and whether or not it should be authorized for construction in its entirety or any portion thereof. Your comments at tonight's hearing should be focused entirely on the MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Segment Three Project, which is the topic of discussion. All interested persons are entitled to be heard at this hearing. However, the testimony portion of this hearing is not a forum for dialogue, questions and answers, or cross-examination. Please direct your remarks to the MacArthur Bike Why, excuse me, the MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Segment Three Project, that is the subject of this hearing. If comments stray into areas not related to this project, I will ask that you refocus your comments to the subject project. Following the conclusion of this public hearing, the record will remain open for two weeks to allow any person who was unable to attend this hearing an opportunity to have their comments included into the public record and be fully considered. The official closing date by which all comments and testimony must be received is Wednesday, April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P. M. Submission should be emailed to Yasemin Asmely at YaseminAsmely@MontgomeryCountyMD.gov or provided via the online comment form on the project website. The comments must be received by the close of the hearing record. After the hearing record is concluded and the record is officially closed, I, as hearing officer, will review and weigh all the information submitted into the public record and make a recommendation to the Director of the Department of Transportation, who is Christopher Conklin, for his final decision as to whether or not the project has been shown to be in the best public interest and whether or not to authorize the project as proposed or any portions thereof. And now, to discuss the shared-use path proposal for MacArthur Boulevard, I give you Maricela Corova. Maricela?
Good evening, Mr. Paylor, ladies and gentlemen. The subject of this evening's public hearing is to consider a proposal, a bike way along MacArthur Boulevard in Bethesda. This bike way will generally be an eight-foot-wide shared-use path with a minimum five-foot-wide grass buffer. The bike way will be along the west side of MacArthur Boulevard, connecting to the existing shared-use path at Overlyne Avenue and extending to the Montgomery County District of Columbia line, where the path will tie into the existing sidewalk network. The proposed improvements are Segment Three of improvements to the MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way. For your convenience, we have posted a few downloadable displays that aid in the visual description of this project. We will review them as I describe the project. Display A is an aerial project vicinity map of MacArthur Boulevard. The vicinity map shows the location of the shared-use path relative to nearby community attractions, such as schools, parks, and the existing network of sidewalks. The proposed shared-use path will be along the portion of MacArthur Boulevard, shown as a red line on the display. Existing sidewalks are shown as yellow lines. The total length of the new shared-use path will be approximately two miles. The project corridor is adjacent to the dedicated right-of-way for the Claravartin Parkway, which is owned by the National Park Service and is colored green on the map designating park property. No impacts are anticipated to this park property. The MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Project has three major typical sections. The top typical section illustrates how the existing shoulders will be repaved and allow for bicycles to ride on roadway with an eight-foot shared-use path to the west side of the road. These will be separated from the road with a five-foot grass buffer. The middle typical section will again use a northbound shoulder for bicycle travel and have an eight-foot shared-use path to the west of the roadway. This typical section separates the path from the roadway with curb and gutter. This will be used in constrained areas, which will be shown over the next several slides. The bottom typical section illustrates the same use of shoulder on northbound MacArthur Boulevard for bicycles and a five-foot bike lane along southbound MacArthur Boulevard. There will be curb and gutter adjacent to the bike lane with up to a five-foot grass buffer between the back of curb and the eight-foot shared-use path. This grass buffer will vary based on existing constraints as well as to transition between the curved sections and the open sections. Each of these typical sections are noted throughout the following slides. The next several slides are the Display B series. These slides illustrate the MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Segment Three in more detail. These are representative of the seventy percent semifinal plans located on the project website and include several color boxes for the purpose of tonight's public hearing, so we can highlight several of the key features. Each of these slides include a key map in the upper-left corner that shows the piece of the path we are discussing along the roadway. In the upper-right corner on this slide is a legend highlighting what the various symbols and line styles are showing. The light gray color represents proposed full-depth pavement. The gray and white striped area represents middle and overlay. Both areas represent different paving activities along the roadway. The orange hashed area represents locations where the pavement is proposed to be removed. The lightest gray represents a portion of a driveway that is proposed to be reconstructed based on building the path. The yellow represents the location of the proposed trail constructed with asphalt that is impervious. This means that water cannot flow through the pavement. The dotted area represents the location of the proposal trail constructed with a pervious pavement. This type of pavement allows water to flow through and is a technique used to help manage drainage in the project area. The dark black line around the back, I'm sorry, around the path that says L O D represents a limit of disturbance. This is the area that is expected to be impacted to construct the path. The limit of disturbance includes the path, the safety grading, and space to be able to construct. Finally, the light red represents areas that are potential right-of-way impacts. These are shown as temporary construction easements, noting that the property will be impacted during construction of the project. Behind the Overlyne Road, an eight-foot path with a minimum of a five-foot grass buffer will be on the west side of MacArthur Boulevard. As shown on this plan, MacArthur Boulevard will be repaid for the length of the project area, as shown with the gray and white striping. The existing shoulders will also be rebuilt. For much of the project corridor, the improvements will be in close proximity with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers' two aqueducts in this area. The aqueducts were built in eighteen fifty-nine and nineteen twenty-one and provide water for the district. Both aqueducts run nearly the entire length of the project area with the eighteen fifty-nine aqueduct running under the roadway from the beginning of the project at Overlyne Avenue and Maryland Avenue. On Maryland Avenue, the eighteen fifty-nine aqueduct is along the west side of the roadway. From Overlyne Avenue to Sangamo Road, where it crosses MacArthur Boulevard and continues east, the nineteen twenty-one aqueduct is typically offset to the west from the older aqueduct, following adjacent to the roadway for much of the corridor until it turns under the roadway near Sangamo Road. The project team has been in close coordination with the Corps to ensure there are no impacts to this historic and vital infrastructure. Segment Two of this project also included construction near the aqueducts and close coordination with the Corps. The county has successfully delivered these types of projects in the past and continues to work closely with the Corps of Engineers to ensure successful projects for the future. The eight-foot-wide path continues on the west side of the roadway with a minimum of a five-foot grass buffer. There are several areas where existing pavement will be able to be removed where the path is proposed to be constructed. The eight-foot-wide, next slide, please. The eight-foot-wide path continues on the west side of the roadway with a minimum of a five-foot grass buffer. The path does include a wider buffer through this segment because there is room to create a greater buffer from the roadway within the existing right-of-way. This also puts more distance between the proposed path and the underground aqueduct. The eight-foot, the eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the west side of the roadway with a minimum of a five-foot grass buffer. There are two existing crossings of MacArthur Boulevard in this segment that will be re-striped for better visibility. In addition, the crossings will be brought up to the American Disabilities Act, ADA, compliance. There are several spot improvements being completed throughout the corridor as part of this project. One of these spot improvements is to the existing parking lot, parking lot and roadway crossings, as shown on this slide. There is an existing parking area across from the intersection with Walhunding Road that will be reconstructed as part of the project. This is being done to minimize conflict points for the people using the path and cars entering and exiting the parking area. ADA compliant parking spaces will be included. The eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the west side of the roadway with a minimum of a five-foot grass buffer. There is an existing park bench along the west side of the road that conflicts with the construction of the proposed path. This bench will be relocated near its existing location. The eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the west side of the roadway with a minimum of a five-foot grass buffer and with additional pavement removals shown in this segment. The eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the west side of the roadway with a minimum of a five-foot grass buffer and again with additional pavement removals shown in this, in this segment. The eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the west side of the roadway with a minimum of a five-foot grass buffer and again with additional pavement removals shown in this segment. In this segment, the grass buffer is removed and a curb is added adjacent to the eight-foot path. There are locations throughout the project area that are constrained based on the location of utilities, the aqueduct, steep slopes, and/or working to minimize any potential property impacts. This is one of those constrained areas. The curb is added to still provide a separation of the bike way from the roadway. In addition, the first of several proposed retaining walls are in this segment. Retaining walls are added to reduce impacts to utilities, steep slopes, or extensive property impacts. The eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the west side of the roadway, adjacent to the roadway with a curb separation. In addition, a portion of MacArthur Boulevard is being rebuilt and shifting the roadway to the east to create more space for the shared-use path within the existing right-of-way. The project team has coordinated with the utility companies in the area to understand different impacts to each utility company. There are some areas, as shown in this segment, where utilities will need to be relocated. The eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the west side of the roadway, adjacent to the roadway with a curb separation, and then transitions back to a minimum five-foot grass buffer. The second retaining wall in the project area is located here. The eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the west side of the roadway with a minimum of a five-foot grass buffer. The MacArthur Boulevard Maryland Avenue intersection has a unique configuration based on providing a heavy vehicle ramp to turn between the two roadways. This ramp is reinforced for the heavy vehicles for when they are crossing over the underground aqueduct. The ramp cannot be relocated and the path cannot continue along MacArthur Boulevard because, because of not wanting to construct over the aqueduct in this area. Because of this, the path is being proposed to go further west as it approaches this intersection. The proposed path will be even further west than the existing trail in this area. This is to increase the space at the intersection so a car can be between the crosswalk and the intersection without impeding the pathway users. The path then continues across a heavy vehicle ramp at a crossing that has a great, that has the greatest visibility. A storm drain system will also be added with a proposed project to convey runoff to the existing outfalls. Through the course of this project, the team has undergone extensive research and coordination to identify existing culverts that may require repair to be replaced in kind as well as work to convey drainage to the appropriate location. The eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues adjacent to the heavy vehicle ramp and then follows the existing trail. The existing trail is steep through this area and the proposed path will follow the grade of the existing trail. This is because of the endangered, endangered plants along either side of the path, utility constraints, minimizing potential property impacts, and avoiding impacts to the aqueduct in this area. The eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the west side of the roadway with a varying buffer to Madagat Road. Continuing south, the path will traverse several driveways that will all be reconstructed to accommodate the path. South of Windward Place, a green crosswalk is being proposed. These will allow for greater visibility of the crossing and is important for this larger driveway and parking area. Continuing south on street parking will be marked out to, on street parking will be marked out to continue to provide those parking spaces while providing a safe place for pedestrians and bicyclists on the pipe, on the path. The eight-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the west side of the roadway with a varying buffer and parking spaces striped out. There are additional green crosswalks to increase visibility across this driveway and parking areas. The path continues to the Maryland District Line where it narrows to tie into the existing sidewalk. As noted earlier, a storm drain system will also be added with a proposed project to convey runoff to the existing outfalls. The MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Project in its entirety is intended to upgrade the existing path along the roadway to current standards to encourage additional pedestrian and bicycle use along the corridor and to enhance safety for all users of all ages and abilities. This project, MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Segment Three, builds upon prior phases to complete the network to the Maryland District Line, thereby promoting a larger system and interconnectivity with safety improvements for all users. The total cost of this project is currently estimated at six million dollars, including engineering, land acquisition, site improvement, utilities, and construction. There are no properties which are considered to be specially benefited by the proposed improvement. Therefore, no properties are expected to be assessed. As previously discussed, several exhibits are incorporated into the public record binder for your information and court and consideration. The exhibits include: Number one, Office of Management and Budget, MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Segment Three, P five zero zero seven one eight. Number two, MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Segment Three, Seventy Percent Design Plans. Number three, written testimony regarding the MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Segment Three proposal provided prior to this hearing. Number four, Washington Times newspaper and online advertisement proof, circulated on March fifteen and March twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, Montgomery County News Release submitted March nine, two thousand and twenty-three, and the news release for social media throughout the month of March on Twitter, Reddit, Post Social, Mastodon, and Nextdoor Sites, all advertising this hearing. Number five, list of attendees to be added following this hearing. Number six, hearing transcript also to be added following this hearing. Project-related data and files can be downloaded from this virtual hearing platform. Alternatively, you may contact Ms. Asmely to request digital copies of the proposed files at Yasemin dot Asmely and Montgomery, and Montgomery, Maryland, M D dot gov, or access the files on the project website. The files will continue to be available to the public until the record for this public hearing is officially closed. As previously stated, here with us this evening is Mr. Dan Sheridan, Chief of Planning and Design Section, Ms. Yasemin Asmely, Project Manager for the MacArthur Boulevard Bike Bike Way Segment Three Project, and Ms. T.R. McCray, Chief of Property Acquisition Section. In addition, we have Ms. Jennifer Ray, Mr. Ryan Beveridge, and Ms. Shelby Smith from the engineering consulting firm JMT, present at this hearing. We will be available after the hearing to answer any questions regarding the construction aspects of this project. And now I will turn things back to Mr. Paylor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maricela. I want to say during this, this meeting, there are some messages that are being sent to me directly and personal on this, on this hearing forum. And I would appreciate it if you would send your messages either to Lori Main or to everyone on the call. I am not going to be able to go through and respond to your questions directly during this hearing. So please make sure that the comments that you submit in the chat are not coming specifically and directly to me. So thank you for that. At this point, we will now hear testimony from those in attendance who wish to testify. As we stated earlier, to testify, please click the status icon on the top menu bar to raise your hand. This is the icon that looks like a person with their hand raised. Once you are provided speaking rights, please clearly provide your name and address for the record prior to the beginning of your testimony. So, Lori, do you have a list of names?
I absolutely do.
All right, so if you'll be so kind to call those names out. And before you do, I'm getting additional messages that are telling me that folk cannot chat to everyone and all of their chat information is coming directly to me, so.
Um, at the top of the chat, the side two, you can click, I have it set so that uh, the chats go to either the co-host or the host.
Okay.
I am the host, Lori Main. If, if you click on that down arrow beside the two on the blue box and you scroll up to either everyone in the meeting or you can at the top of that type my name, Lori, L O R I, Main, M A I N, then the chat will be directed to myself or everyone in the meeting.
Thanks, Lori. I, I simply want to make sure that everyone has their chat comments addressed and don't want to miss anyone. I'm not trying to be uncharitable or unsocial.
Yeah, no, I actually have been copied on me.
Great, I'm glad. So maybe it, it just shows that way and it, it looks that way. Okay, so we'll have you start reading off the names of folk and we'll allow the testimony portion to begin. Thank you.
Absolutely. First, we'll hear from Callie Crumpo. Hey, Callie, can you unmute yourself or maybe this is Callie? Okay, uh, next up, Michael Liebman. Michael Liebman, can you please unmute yourself? Okay, I don't see Michael in the lineup either. Let's try Joe Byrne. Joe Byrne, can you please unmute yourself? All right, how about Kathy Nelson? Wow, we are just striking out over here.
Technical difficulties here, wow.
Yeah, um, okay, Clive Bear. Clive Bear.
Uh, yes, uh, have I unmuted myself?
Perfect.
You have, Clive. How are you tonight?
Okay.
Great.
I am located at sixty-five forty-five Broad Street, where my back door is perhaps forty feet from the current guardrail on MacArthur Boulevard and perhaps fifty feet from the pavement of MacArthur Boulevard. I have some questions and concerns about stormwater runoff from MacArthur, which has been a problem for the upstream northwestern end of Broad Street for myself and my neighbors for decades. Uh, I would suggest, however, that it would perhaps be more useful for the group as a whole if, you know, if we were to hear first from the representatives on the call who, uh, on the, uh, Brookmont Civic League, who could address the larger issues of the, that the community has with this issue. But, you know, but I would like to be called on again at a later time if your system permits that kind of flexibility.
Thank you for your comments, Clive.
Um, Mike, Michael, Peter Hobby here. I, I did submit a request for testimony and I'm the president of the Brookmont Civic League. I'd be happy to kick off with some, um, you know, what we're seeing on our side. And then Gordon and others, I know we have a few others on the call, would, could follow, if that's acceptable.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, you bet. Um, first, thanks very much. I mean, it's really good to see the drawings, understand the context a bit. We did have plans shared with us. We've had a series of meetings and ongoing communications with Dan and Yasmin. So appreciate that. Um, we do look at this as a community, as a longer-term engagement. We were very interested in getting the bike way issue kind of settled and meeting our needs. But, um, and you'll hear this coming up, I think, as part of our, we hope, long-term practical set of solutions to the stormwater issue, um, that we expect the bike way may not solve these things. So we're aware as a community, we're here for the long haul and we want to work on solving those things for the long haul as well. Um, our concern overall on the stormwater, let me touch on that briefly and, you know, it's, it's not new. Um, we are literally downhill from the bike way and MacArthur Boulevard. We have sixteen, fifteen homes affected in that immediate vicinity. Uh, we've had erosion, damage, as Gordon shared. Uh, it's cost, uh, you know, time, money, energy, all sorts of things for just, you know, the down, downstream effects of this. Um, we do understand and we very much appreciate the county's quickly jumping on filling in some of the, uh, current damage with riprap. That's great to see that flow already being managed. We look forward to getting the sheet approach, you know, the sheet water, uh, sheet runoff approach in place to help distribute. So it's a little more. So it's a little more equitably flowing down on our neighbors all downhill. Uh, but we really would like to look at longer-term solutions like easements to run water down into storm drains, things of that sort. We understand that's out of scope for this. We've already, we've had a great meeting with Dan and Yasmin, so we're aware. Um, but we're here to push for that as well. Um, and so others will speak, I think, in a little more detail about the effects on their homes from stormwater. Our other concern, um, you know, and we are the only, uh, neighborhood we realize downstream from this effort. So stormwater is of particular significance for us. Additionally, the intersection, uh, is the most complicated at MacArthur and Maryland Avenue. We have the bike crossing, we have the T-intersection with cars. We have a pedestrian intersection or crosswalk over to the other side of, of, uh, MacArthur, and we also have that truck ramp um, and the bike ramp, all hitting at the same place. It's a bit of a hydra of an intersection. Um, and so we have as a group been discussing, um, we're interested in exploring additional approaches to routing the bike way. The potential for sort of a Z sort of leg, keep it in line with MacArthur, bring it across the truck ramp and down as one option. That's been offered by the community. Um, we also are concerned, the current layout implies certainly, if not really should, mean a double stop for cars. Uh, our current problem is cars do stop in the bike way, uh, essentially, because that's how the stop sign is set up. So we're very interested in hearing creative solutions to how to handle what's effectively a double stop now um, for the safety of all of us. Um, and we certainly have advocates in the neighborhood calling out why, why the double stop for cars. Um, we want to manage bike flow as well as we can. Um, in addition, um, and again, you know, very fruitful meeting with, with Dan and, uh, Yasmin. The bike engineer, looking at the intersection, we want to hear all the options around flashing lights, rumble strips, pylons. What can we do there to make that a safe crossing? Um, simply moving the path, uh, will not address the issues, we don't believe. Um, so, you know, I want to get those two major concerns, the intersection itself and the routing is one issue. The proper bike engineer approach to really manage that cross flow of traffic hugely useful too. We'd like to see that. We did, um, it was mentioned by mid-April or so that the bike engineer will have looked and there should be more, uh, detailed plans. We look forward to seeing that. Um, and I think that's about it. Um, I'll turn it over to, back to the community and other neighbors, uh, if they'd like to add more.
Well, thank you, Peter. Appreciate that.
Okay, next up, we have Paul Weinberger.
Please, excuse me, could I chime in? This is David Berg. Uh, I was with Peter at the meeting. And I have a few other points to make that would be community-wide, if I may.
Sure, you're actually on my list, but you can go ahead and come back to Paul Weinberger. That's fine, you can go ahead and we'll just come circle back to him.
Um. Okay, um, excuse me. The, um. I just wanted to, uh, add the point on the stormwater, uh, sheet flow that, um, we're not sure how much that's going to reduce the quantity of stormwater flowing into backyards. Um, and, and although that should spread it out and, and reduce erosion. Um, and, and so solutions that would reduce the stormwater entering people's backyards and approaching their homes uh, it would really be a good thing. So I want to reiterate Peter's point that a longer-term solution may involve something more extensive in terms of, of, uh, such as easements and collecting the stormwater, putting it into the storm drain on Broad Street. Um. I wanted also, uh, another point to, uh, thank you for addressing a small but dangerous stormwater pro- problem on the uphill side of the MacArthur, Maryland intersection. Um, where a, uh, a steel plate now covers a little channel that carries stormwater and that's not been an effective solution and we understand from, uh, Dan and Yasmin that um, that, uh, steel plate and channel is going to be removed at the area will be regraded and the water will run around the concrete pad at the end of the crosswalk. We think that's good. Um, an idea that we have not, at that same intersection and for people crossing MacArthur. Um, we didn't talk to Dan and Yasmin about the idea of adding um, pedestrian activated yellow flashing lights for people crossing MacArthur at the intersection. Um. I want to note, uh, on behalf of my neighbors, my kids are older now, but um, that the school bus stop is inside Brookmont and people on the opposite side of MacArthur um, are now having to walk their kids across the street even with the crosswalk because it's just a dangerous intersection for pedestrians. And, and so, um. Uh. We, we also understand that it's not Dan's part of, uh, the, uh, Department of Transportation that would handle this. Um, but we think that there may need to be some additional safety at that for pedestrians crossing MacArthur at that intersection using that crosswalk, particularly because of the kids and trying to reach the bus stop. Um. And then, and then one last, uh, significant point, and that is, is the, the stretch of the, uh, shared use path from Maryland Avenue to Sangamore Road. Uh, some people in Brookmont have noted in the, uh, on our listserv that um, there are several people in Brookmont who use the, I think it's the D-six bus or the D-five bucks bus uh, to commute. That bus comes up MacArthur from DC and turns right on Sangamore Road and people get off and then have to walk down to Brookmont on the shared use path. Uh, in, uh, when we're on standard time, that means they're walking through the woods down a steep hill in the dark. And, and that's quite a dangerous thing. And we're wondering whether it would be possible to install lighting um, that would be on during, you know, at least evening rush hour, if not into the evening a little further uh, for people who are, uh, using that in the, in the hours of dark, uh, when there's a lot of foot traffic. So those would be the points I would add to Peter's. I appreciate the opportunity to raise these and thank you. Um, and one other point is, um, I, I want to express my concern that although we initiated, um, with the Department of Transportation in October twenty twenty-one, we never heard anything more until we got the meeting notice and we got the meeting notice secondhand. Um, Dan and other key people did engage with us and we appreciate that very much. But that was long after the seventy percent plan was done and the ninety percent plan was close to being finalized. And furthermore, we didn't receive notice of the public hearing on a timely basis. And even then, it turns out we were dropped from the mailing list. So Brookmont did never, never receive the uh, hearing notice until the last minute and not from the standard mailing. And we'd appreciate, we think it's really important for the county to operate with transparency on this project and others. And we hope that in the future, um, transparency can be maintained. Uh, you know, we, we've been, we were talking with the county in twenty nineteen about the intersection, safety issues at the intersection. And, uh, and then we tried again in October of twenty twenty-one and we, we really were not involved in a conversation with the county and we think it would have been far better if we'd been able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, next up, we have Paul Weinberger. Paul.
Yes. Yeah, I've unmuted.
Okay, great.
Okay, uh, I'm Paul Weinberger. I live at sixty-five ten Elgin Lane in Bethesda. I'm about a mile from the bike path of, you know, where Glen Echo, where, uh, around Glen Echo. And that's where my wife and I go walking, you know, maybe three or four times a, a week. Um, and I've noticed that in certain sections of it, you've, you get a lot, you get more foot traffic. In fact, during weekdays, you get more foot traffic than you get bicycles on the shared bike path. And in some places, people are walking dogs and have carriages. And I was wondering if it would be possible to widen it in those places a little more than you had originally designed to make it a little easier for the bikes and the people walking dogs and the people with carriages to, to get by, to get past each other. And also on the corner, um, where it, um, not exactly sure how to describe it, where the MacArthur ties into, um, kind of Clara Barton, right around, uh, where the Irish Inn is, there's a, a red light. And would it be possible to put a sign for the people coming up the hill that a large sign that says no turn on red? Right now they have an arrow, you know, so they can turn right. Um, and they can obviously turn right on green. But a nice big sign that says no, no right turn, no turn on red, I think might, um, help a little bit. And if you'd like me, I could tell you the, the parts that I walk on the bike path that are busier than the other parts. And I can send that in, uh, through an email or something. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that, is that it, Paul? Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's it.
Appreciate it, brother.
Okay, next we'll hear from Jesse Goodman.
Um, hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can. Hi, Jesse.
Hi, hi there. Thanks so much for having this meeting and the opportunity to comment on. I'm Jesse Goodman. I'm a longtime Glen Echo Heights resident. I live directly above an affected part of MacArthur Boulevard. The, what used to be called Rocker Commuter Road above Brookmont. Um, I'm also a frequent bike commuter down to Georgetown and user of the bike path, so I think I have a good sense of the issues, um, you know, not just for the neighborhood, but for cars and bikers. Um, that said, from what I've seen so far, um, I really have some substantial concerns about the proposal. And while the details have been a bit difficult to fully understand for a non, um, architect or reader of these maps. I, I think the project is wasteful and potentially harmful as planned and could be scaled back uh, and still maintain most of the benefit or the potential benefit. Um, particularly the proposal stated it could add, uh, six feet of concrete to the roadway uh, for what was stated in the proposal to be four point seven miles. And that represents something like a, a third widening of impervialable surface on the roadway. Uh, even without any widening of the bike way. And I, I think this will have both negative environmental impacts and adverse effects on the aesthetics and use of the road in the neighborhood. Um, all of this added concrete, along with what would be added in widening the bike way will produce a more engineered and wider feeling to what's now a scenic road and exacerbate, as others have said, runoff problems. It will reduce already shrinking habitat because of all this, uh, construction uh, of housing for wildlife and pollinators. And I don't think that's just in places, which I'm glad you identified with endangered plants, but more generally where I live, there's, uh, tremendous, uh, habitat for wildlife and pollinators. I think this will increase heat generation like we see whenever there's paving, uh, and noise. Unfortunately, I also think a more urban feeling wider road will actually attract and exacerbate commuting car traffic on MacArthur and potentially increase speed of travel. Uh, and I'm sort of surprised that the plan seems to encourage more on-road biking even with a renewed bike path, you know, which, which one would think should be adequate. And I worry that will further reduce, uh, biker and, uh, car safety. So putting this together, to me, the project seems contrary to what we should be doing to be sound environmental stewards and at high cost and, and provide minimal benefits. Um, I would urge considering scaling down the project in a major way to refocus it on just improving the bike way uh, and grass protection of the bike way and pedestrians from cars, which should be able to be done without more general widening and extensive construction on the roadway. This would cost far less, it seems, uh, and the money could be freed up for other uses. And, and I also wanted to echo a little bit of a process concern. I just, even though I try to stay alert to what's going on, I just found out about this a few days ago by a chance conversation. Uh, and so was not aware of the original plans. Uh, and there's been, for, at least for me, a very short time to review plans and provide input. So I do appreciate this opportunity tonight, but feel there should be attention to and further opportunity for input, uh, from the affected communities. So I would ask you to stop and reconsider and uh, take steps to reduce negative impacts on the environment. I do think this can really be done without affecting uh, what seemed to be pretty minimal gains in safety by the project as planned. Um, thanks very much.
Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate your comments, brother.
Okay, next we'll hear from Carly Sue.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hey, Carlos, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Going well also. Thank you so much for, uh, seeking to comment.
Yes, I have a lot of thoughts on this, uh, project, um, which I shared. I wasn't sure if I was going to make tonight's meeting. So I shared a bunch of questions which were, um, largely answered from the information tonight, so thank you. Um, but I do love a good bike path. However, I think there are some major hangups to this plan. Um, I live at fifty-two oh-two, uh, Nahot Street, so just up the hill from Walhounding. And so this is my backyard. This is where I ride my bike. This is where I run on the path. So I am very familiar with this area. Um, and I think eight feet is undersized according to the federal highway safety guidelines. Um, bike pathways that have shared use of this nature should be a minimum of ten feet wide. So I believe that eight feet is actually undersized. And I have major concerns about the adding of three-foot bike lanes to the road. So I'm all for resurfacing this road. This road has been in great need of being resurfaced. Um, from a biker safety standpoint. Um, but I think that you know, bike lane should be a minimum of four feet and ideally five feet. So three feet is actually, I think, creating a safety problem for cyclists who do ride on the road as myself. Um, I choose not to ride on the pathways because I'm hitting speeds of over twenty-five miles an hour, which is um, not safe to be on a shared, um, pathway, but I also have a right to be safe on the road. And I think three feet actually might be creating more danger because of the blind curves through that section of the road. Um, driver's behavior, um, tend to want to pass cyclists, um, as fast as possible. And, um, through those blind curves, it's just not a safe driving mood, mode, because they can't see traffic coming from the other side. And I think a three-foot, um, bike lane may embolden them to make, um, unsafe passes that maybe they wouldn't have otherwise made. Um. And that the roadway might actually be safer without the additional space. Um, because of the, um, added speed that I think drivers may take on by thinking that they have more room on the road. Um, a three-foot buffer is required from a car to a bike. And with a three-foot bike lane, you're not, you're not going to get that, that safety space that's required through those blind curves. So that's a huge concern for me as far as what the perception of that and how it actually gets used since it is a major, major bike thoroughfare for our community. Um, and then I have major concerns that I just want to put out there as far as all of the intersections along this stretch, um, of the segment three are really dangerous to pedestrians. Cars are not stopping. I think there needs to be an additional visible crosswalk at Walhounding. Um, because there aren't sidewalks on Walhounding, so you have to go opposite of traffic. Um, if you're continuing being a pedestrian up that road. Um, and I don't know, I've almost been hit at the, um, intersection at Clara Barton as a pedestrian, almost every time I have to use the intersection. Um, so there needs to be a big safety improvement for um, how people get across that intersection. Thank you so much for listening.
Yeah, thank you, Carly Sue. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, next we will hear from Callie Crumpo.
Hi all, this is Callie Crumpo. I'm just calling in. Thanks for having me here. Um, I look forward to submitting written testimony. Um, and I'm glad to listen in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, that's the last person on my list, so we'll go to the raised hands. We have Kenneth. Kenneth.
Uh, this is, uh, this is Clive Bear. I'll, uh, contribute, uh, whenever.
Uh, this is, uh, this is Clive Bear. I'll uh contribute whenever convenient.
Okay, great.
Uh, this is Ken Hinger. I'm ready.
Okay, Kenneth, please proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm really excited to see this. Um, I uh live in the Carter Rock Springs neighborhood and commuted uh by bicycle uh three times a week during season on this pathway um and have a great familiarity with it and uh some of the safety concerns. Um, uh, I would say first I must appreciate that years ago, uh, we, I pointed out that the inside curves, if you will, on the uh MacArthur Boulevard uh needed those barriers that were put up, so people who were driving did not tend to uh cut the corner and, and be driving into a uh incoming bike bikers and made a great safety improvement, and I really thank the county for doing that. Uh, it was at my request that that was initiated. Um, it was, it was really great. Um, this pathway I look at being a great addition to overall safety and bicycle transportation. Um, I, I should point out that it appears to me that it is appealing to, the plans appeal to two kinds of bikers. We have, you know, recreational bikers, and, and now that I'm long retired after having commuted for nine years down to USDA downtown from uh Carter Rock Springs, um, is that you have your recreational bikers which um on a shared pathway is probably okay. But we also have what we might call the serious bikers. You know, the people that want to run at twenty-five miles an hour, which is a little fast for me at seven, over seventy years old now. Um, I ride, I ride paranoid. I don't want to ride on the road. But, you know, having ridden actually in today in some of the bicycle lanes that are marked on roads, they're far better than the current fighting with the traffic where there is no marked bicycle lane on the main highway. That is a great improvement. I, I appreciate the point that maybe three feet isn't wide enough, but it certainly is better than what is there currently. And by having both the lanes on the main road and the shared use, I think you're actually going to help both people, both types, types of bicycle riders. Um, those who are more the casual rider and those who are more the uh serious, uh, serious road biker. Um, so I'm very happy to see this going along. Um, I, I would uh also comment on that difficult intersection between Maryland Avenue and where Sagamore Road comes in. Um, I'm really looking forward to new pavement on that section. Um, you know, it rattles your teeth when you go across there, so uh that and any uh that, that hill is steep enough that if one can do anything to uh reduce the steepness of that grade during the reconstruction, it would probably be most appreciated by a lot of riders. Um, all the other comments that people have made, I, I think are, are, are pretty valid. Uh, I have no idea about the runoff issues. Um, that we, they happen everywhere. Up here in Carter Rock Springs, I've had two construction projects to deal with erosion over the last twenty years we've lived here. So I'm, I'm really supportive of this improvement to what is in my opinion between uh Persimmon Tree Road and Georgetown um where I end up on my uh commute. Um, actually, it was downtown when I ended up on my commute, but that's a, a very different matter. This is the most problematic section in terms of safety because right now you're riding on the shoulder of the road, and even though it's uh wide in some places, it is much more pleasant to have that barrier for those of us who prefer to ride on uh a dedicated pathway rather than um on the road itself, even when it's a um, a uh, a marked bicycle path. The bike, bike, bike bicycle path is definitely at a vast improvement over fighting with cars, and I've had a number of people who, driving cars, hate bikers. And uh, you know, you really get scared sometimes when um those folks are competing with what they view as their road. So uh, you know, getting the bikes off of the main section of road is definitely a very, very good thing. So I think that's the end of my comments. Oh, the one last thing I would say is that, you know, of course, I would imagine that many of the folks coming up MacArthur Boulevard are what they're doing is crossing over to the Capital Crescent Trail, which is what I did for nine years. Um, it's um, uh, that crossing right now I think seems adequate. But, you know, you've got to come up at the moment and ride on the sidewalk before you get to where the crossing is. So uh, I would hope they take a close look at um that uh connection between the MacArthur Boulevard and the crossing that takes you over to connecting to the Capital Crescent Trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Cam.
Okay, Clive, would you like to unmute yourself now?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, again, I, I'm at sixty-five forty-five Broad Street, which is the upstream northwest end of Broad Street. A bit of background that goes back decades. I and at least three of my neighbors, uh, the two houses uh uh northwest of me and the one house uh uh toward Maryland Avenue have undertaken uh major uh remediation over the last several decades of, you know, of storm, stormwater uh, you know, runoff coming down the hill from MacArthur. As I indicated earlier, from uh, you know, the back of my house to the existing guardrail is perhaps forty feet. It is perhaps fifty feet to the MacArthur Boulevard pavement on the other si- uh side of the shared use path. Uh, I put in a diversion and a bit of a uh, a water sink neighbor to uh, you know, upstream uh, up uh, uh northwest uh has spent, uh, you know, several thousand dollars, uh, as I understand it in remediating uh what had been a drainage coming down through his property. You know, the, you know, the, uh, the house uh at the far uh uh northwest end of Brookmont has also undertaken extensive, you know, efforts, and the neighbor yeah, toward Maryland Avenue was in contact with the county some twenty, twenty-five years ago uh and uh initiated the uh construction of a storm drain from MacArthur down to the Broad Street sewer between his property and mine. Um, I trust that that drain will remain. If uh the bike path were paved over exactly where it is, that drain would be covered up. Uh, I am concerned that a thirty percent or thereabouts uh increased in impervious surface uh by uh widening MacArthur for the bike lanes, you know, would increase the runoff by at least thirty percent in the area where uh uh my house and the ones that I've mentioned are uh, there is essentially no space between MacArthur and the, and the existing shared use path, nor is there any space between the shared use path and the existing guardrail. Uh, two or three feet of grass, perhaps, no more. The questions that I would have is, will the guardrail be removed at any point in particular behind these houses? And is vegetation going to be cut? Because several of us have assiduously planted a fair amount of vegetation, both for visible screening and for runoff remediation. Yeah, I would be uh, you know, extremely uh, uh, upset. You know, where, you know, where, you know, the county to come across the existing guardrail and start cutting vegetation. Um, it is unclear to me from having seen the briefing uh earlier tonight uh exactly where uh uh my uh I and my immediate neighbors fit into the, you know, was, will there be a five-foot uh grass space with some opportunity to uh remediate water or not? I don't think, I don't think this is, you know, this is possible. Uh, you know, where we are, so I wonder what the, you know, county plans are uh for uh taking care of the likely increase in stormwater runoff, including, you know, what weather uh further uh drains down to the uh Broad Street uh sewer uh would be contemplated. Uh, final comment would be, I was a bike commuter downtown for uh, you know, upwards of a decade after I first moved to to Brookmont in the nineties. And that was, this was usually on the tow path or later the Capital Crescent. I have ridden, you know, the shared use path, including all the way out, you know, to uh, you know, uh uh anglers and so forth and so on, and I would not dream of riding on the bike path out there where it has been completed. The three-foot width is absolutely unacceptable in terms of the, by, you know, uh, assessment of my survival possibilities. And I'm, and I, and I am on the shared use path out there. I share the comments that, you know, that were made uh about the uh, the risks associated with a three-foot bike path uh on a curvy road with uh, uh, you know, you know, uh, high levels of commuter traffic. And uh, I would, I wouldn't dream of riding on that, you know, on uh a uh uh, uh, such a path uh if it is indeed constructed. I would uh, you know, uh, hope that the county would uh reassess that need in the first place. Uh, thank you.
Uh, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Okay, next we'll hear from Erica Carlson.
Hi, thank you, Lori. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
We can, Erica, hi.
Hi, um, so uh, thank you um to, to both of you and to the presenters with this information. Um, I am new to the neighborhood. My address is sixty-five one seven Wiscasset Road. I am a bike commuter, a car commuter, a walker and a runner, and I have been using the MacArthur path um since I arrived about a year and a half ago. So maybe I'm coming at this with a little bit of fresh eyes, and I'm also not as familiar with some of the concerns that have been maybe brought up in the past. So I appreciate the previous speakers as well and support and endorse a lot of the uh statements that have been made already. Um, I want to say that I fully support this project as somebody who bikes very frequently and is a bike commuter. Uh, I think anything that the county does to improve biker safety, particularly as somebody who's part of the foreign service community and is very aware of the death that we had. Um, well, I'm um a spouse, a, a member of that community who was biking in, in the area. I'm really um, really um sensitive to this topic. But I think that we should think about not only allowing, providing biker paths for people, but thinking about how we make the roads safer because roads are not just for cars, as um other um speakers have mentioned, there are pedestrians as well who are using these, these roads either to cross over or just to get from point A to point B um without a car or a bicycle. And to this point, I just want to note that I put in um a request for a crosswalk at Mohegan Road, which is one of, I think, the only roads that ends at MacArthur Avenue that does not have a crosswalk and was told that it was not eligible for a crosswalk because there is no stop sign. And when I, you know, assess the area, I noticed no other locations that at MacArthur Avenue have a stop sign, including at the um Mohegan Pool or at Walhounding Road. So I'm not sure why this is not part of the plan, but I would like to just reiterate that request that as somebody who crosses at Mohegan Avenue, um, this is a place where I think pedestrians and bicyclists are at great risk for accidents because there is no stop sign and because the commuter traffic tends to back up well beyond from um the entranceway into Clara Barton Parkway past Mohegan Road. You, if you're crossing at that point, you're often going in between those stop cars and trying to manage the traffic coming from the other direction who might not see you because of that backup of traffic. And it's just inexplicable to me why there wouldn't be a crosswalk at this location along MacArthur Road, particularly because the idea is to access the, the pathway, um, the multi-use path. Um, it, 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 again, I'm just at, at a loss of why that, that request was denied so simply um and inexplicably. Um, and so that's all I wanted to say, and I want to thank you all for, again, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Erica. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, Kate McNerney.
Hi, thanks to everyone. I'll be brief. Um, I am a neighbor at six-five-three-five Broad Street, just four houses south of uh Mr. Bear who just spoke um two testimonies ago. And I just wanted to essentially reiterate what he said um in terms of the concern about the stormwater drain off. So my house also at six-five-three-five Broad Street is about forty feet from the um guardrail, but it's very steep. And I've spent about um ten thousand dollars in the last two years just to um have to regrade and uh uh redirect water and then also um completely redo my basement, which had um significant leaks um from the, the runoff. And so um I think the previous owner hadn't addressed it, and so I got to do that. Um, but I'm concerned that with any change in vegetation or um, it, to be honest, it was unclear from the map, and I even screenshotted it and tried to zoom in exactly where the path would go and, and as Mr. Bear said, any sort of um kind of cut in, into our backyards. So if it's possible to get more clarification and a more precise visual map of, would you actually be coming? Maybe it's a clear answer, but if you could provide more information about how far into our backyards, if at all, you'd be sort of coming into or the vegetation right before it, that would be helpful. Um, but yeah, my concerns around the stormwater. Um, I also share the concern about the intersection with Maryland um Avenue, the entrance to Brookmont, that there would be two stop signs um for cars because I think that could create some safety issues. That's all. Thank you again.
Thank you, Kate. Appreciate your comment.
Okay, that is all I have, Michael.
Sorry. So, so now that we've, um, well, I'll, I'll say this. We've uh listened to the speakers who have expressed an interest in speaking tonight.
You haven't. Uh, there's Bill Endicott was supposed to speak.
Can I, can I speak?
I'm sorry, but.
No, that's okay. That's okay. If you had allowed me to finish my um, my monologue, I would have offered an opportunity for anyone who has yet to speak to do so. So at this time, if there's anyone else who would like to speak and offer oral testimony, please uh, uh, make yourself known and state your name and your address, please.
Uh, I'm Bill Endicott. Uh, I live at
Thank you, Bill.
Sixty-five thirty-seven Broad Street. I want to echo what uh Mr. Bear and Ms. McNerney just said. Um, we moved here in nineteen eighty, and ever since we've had a problem of water accumulating in our garage. And I'm very concerned that the bike path uh project will exacerbate this problem. And I would very much like to hear what's being done that might improve the situation. Uh, we spent money to hire a landscaper to try to mitigate the problem, and it has helped some. Um, we used to get an inch or so of water covering most of the garage, and I would sweep it out over a period of days. Now the water uh only accumulates in part of the garage, and it's easier to sweep it out. But it's still an ongoing problem, and the garage and adjacent basement get damp and musty because of it. So I'd like to hear what uh would be done through this bike uh project that would ameliorate this situation. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Bill. Is there anyone else who would like to offer? Is there anyone else who would like to offer oral testimony at this time? All right. So thank you all for your oral testimony and seeing that everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to do so. This concludes the oral testimony portion of this hearing. Uh, at this time, we'll have a question and answer session. So if you do, uh, similarly as, uh, in the previous session, please click the icon to raise your hand if you wish to ask a question. And you're also welcome to type your question into the chat box below. So does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask or offer in the, in the chat?
Okay, Carly too has a question.
I guess, thank you. So one of the, um, questions I have that hasn't been answered is regarding, um, Mohegan Pool and its summer parking. Um, it often has um, big events where the parking at the pool is inadequate and they have been allowed um, to park on the grass median between the current bikeway, um, and the actual road. And I'm wondering if the pool, um, community has been made aware of these changes and whether or not that will be allowed to continue.
Thank you.
Does one of the on-call engineers have a, a response to that or is, are they able to, is anyone able to respond to that?
So, hi, I thank you for your question, Carly. This is Dan Sheridan. I'm with MCDOT. And, um, the pool would have been notified of this meeting. Um, we can reach out to them. I don't know that they've been, I don't, this is the first I'm hearing of that parking issue. Um, I don't know that, uh, we can have that conversation with them. It may be a matter of enforcement. Um, but we can reach out to the pool if you have a contact, uh, at the pool, that would be great. Uh, we can, and we can, uh, specifically reach out to them. I don't know if the, if Yasi or Jennifer, if you've had any specific contact, but I'm guessing we have not designed team.
I haven't had any comments on that.
Yeah, okay, overflow. We can, we can follow up with them. And if you, Carly, if you have a contact, that would be very helpful to us.
Uh, yeah, the, I think the board of directors is listed on the Mohegan Pool website. It's a summertime, um, organization. So I'm guessing that this is currently not on their radar and I don't want them to be like, up in arm with a big surprise because let me tell you, that parking goes all the way down the street during their swim meets.
No, I, I had a couple of children who went through those swim meets, uh, you know, at a different pool and I understand the, the, you know, the, the seasonal part of it. And, uh, so we can, we can look up their contact and report, you know, discuss, discuss this project with them, what their concerns are.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a question from Peter Hobbie.
Yeah, hey, thanks. Thanks very much for all of this, really. Um, I wanted to check and apologies if I missed it. When, when's the next iteration of the plans available for review and will they include the bike specific, uh, recommendations for the intersection at Maryland and MacArthur? Thanks.
The plan can be available. It is available seventy percent, seventy-five percent plans in the link that has been provided for the project. And, uh, we are working right now on, uh, toward to ninety percent plans. Uh, that would be, uh, completed or it, we are working toward to ninety percent and we are hoping to, we are going to receive it from the design consultant by mid-April. And also we do have a plan in our office that if you're interested, we can set up the meeting and you can review it if you want.
That would be great. Quick follow-up. Would there, will, uh, this group, the neighbors, the same group you reached out here be notified that those plans are available for review? Thanks.
Yeah, we can, we can do like an email blast to people saying when we, uh, uploaded the ninety percent plans to our website.
That'd be super helpful. Appreciate it, girl.
I did just want to add the comment while it's, the submission is due, uh, the ninety percent plans will be submitted to the county in April. That is the internal county review still. So there will be some back and forth as well on that. So while we talk about that mid-April, April timeframe, there, there might be a little bit of a, a lag as there is some back and forth between the county and the consultant team before something might be posted out on a website.
Okay, great. We have another question. We have a question from Erica Carlson.
Hi, thank you again. Um, I'm wondering if the, the plans are currently considering any change to the, um, current speed limit for vehicles as well as other traffic calming measures along the stretch of MacArthur. As others have mentioned, this is kind of a, a major commuter path I've noticed for people trying to access Clara Barton. And also seems to be no, no, not many people respect the current thirty mile per hour speed limit and many cars go off the road because the lack of a shoulder and the curvy nature of MacArthur at this point, as well as other kind of natural slowing down areas, you know, things that would slow cars down. Um, and as a walker, I see many marks of vehicles that have gone off the road and probably into the pathway. Uh, um, and, and there are bus stops, I think, along this road. So I think there might be some consideration. I'm wondering if there are any of these traffic calming measures being considered.
Um, I believe the speed limit would be twenty-five miles per hour. That's, we are going toward to twenty-five miles per hour for the MacArthur Boulevard.
And, and, uh, uh, there is, the lane width is proposed to be narrower, which is a traffic calming measure in and of itself. And then, and of course, the pedestrian crossings are going to be high visibility crossings. So that's another, another, um, uh, traffic calming method that will be part of this project. But it is definitely a challenge, uh, due to the commuter nature of this route, uh, to get the vehicle to, uh, you know, obey this speed limit.
Okay, next we have a question from F. Shelton.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is Federica Stout and I live at six-five-three-one Broad Street. And several of my neighbors, um, have raised a question about the guard rail and whether it will move. And I'm trying to figure out how we can tell that from the plans that you, um, demonstrated tonight. Is there a way to go back to the section, um, uh, that's north of Maryland Boulevard and sort of give us an indication of whether the guard rails will move? Do you know that right now?
Lori, can you go back to the B-one slides?
Sure.
Uh, the one that is uh, near the intersection of Maryland Avenue. Getting close. Yep, right in there, I think.
Right there.
Yes.
Yes. So this, and I don't know if this, if this is the section of, of Broad Street as you're talking about. Uh, but I don't, the, uh, uh, Jennifer or Yasi, can you speak to the, the path is going back in the same location here? Is that correct?
That's a correct location, but I have a hard time to say in it from the plans, um, if it can be, uh, magnified.
Yes, so the, the path will go back in the same general location with the exception of right at the intersection as it does shift in order to accommodate that change within the crossing. Um, as far as the guard rail, much of that guard rail is proposed to be replaced and replaced in kind, meaning replaced in the current location that it's at, um, with some improvements of recognizing in this area that some of that guard rail, um, there is some erosion right around the guard rail and so improving that and, uh, placing that back in the same location.
I apologize. I hope I'm not jumping out of line here. Um, again, some of our, my neighbors and we have as well put vegetation along there as a screen. Would we be notified of that? Would the vegetation be moved? What would happen?
Let, let me answer that. I think the best thing to do, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot your first name. But is to reach out specifically to Yasi and Jennifer. And we can go over very specifically what, what the impacts are immediately behind your property. And, uh, and then, you know, perhaps even do a field visit where we look specifically at vegetation, vegetation, look specifically at the guard rail and to let, you know, to let, understand your concerns and to let you know what the plan is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is Clive. There, I'd be interested in that myself as well.
Yeah, it sounds like we have a, a group of people there along Broad Street who have existing drainage issues. Again, I think we may have met at least some of you in, in the field. Oh, you know, I think about a little over a year ago. And just to kind of discuss specifically your concerns and then let you know what our plans are. And, you know, work together to accomplish both an improved bike way and, uh, you know, if nothing worth, you know, uh, nothing, you know, a no change. That's an improvement.
Uh, right, Dan. At that, at that meeting, which was October of twenty-twenty-one, uh, uh, Yasemin was able to speak with each neighbor individually and saw their problems they've had and what they've been doing and what their concerns are. So you're, you're right that we did it in the past and it would be great to do it again. This is David.
Yeah, I think it's a good time now, like we're at, at a more advanced design stage. Uh, so we can tell you a little bit with more detail what's going on there. And I think that will help everybody understand the project. So I, I guess, uh, David and, uh, Clive and Mrs. Shelton, we can, uh, work on, you know, afterwards, you know, to get, you know, a date that works for everybody where we can meet out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. I don't have any more hands raised. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just was saying thanks too. It took me a minute.
That's okay. Um, okay, but I do have a couple of questions in the chat. And if anybody thinks of a question, you can raise your hand by clicking on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and then clicking raise hand. Um, so the first question in the chat says, the current bike trail is uh, windy with dips and directionally uneven. Can this be addressed by proper grading and straightening? This will better encourage bicyclists to use the trail rather than the street.
So I'll, um, I've got my mic unmuted. I, yes, that's exactly what this project does. Uh, you know, I don't know how long that trail's been there and it's just over time, it gets, uh, it needs maintenance and part of that is basically reconstructing the trail to give it a clean line and grade, as we say in the business. So that, that will be addressed during this project.
Okay, great. We have a question from Jesse Goodman.
Hi, sorry about that. I was muted.
Sorry.
Thank, thank you. And I was just saying, these additional drawings look like they're going to be really helpful. I, I would just ask, I know that these plans and the intent are pretty far along, but I think while there were some other opinions and divergent opinions, you did hear from several people concerns about the three feet added pavement on each side of roadway and whether that might actually reduce, uh, safety, increased speeds, et cetera. Uh, as well as I raised the, I think innumerable environmental issues about it. So I hope this isn't so far along that you can't consider, uh, these comments and look at them carefully and look in your history of roadways. What has happened with this kind of, uh, addition, uh, you know? Anyhow, but thank you again for the opportunity to comment.
Thanks, thanks again. Yes.
Okay, um, I don't know if you would just address this with the plant, but, um, Clive also asked, are you prepared to add new storm drains between the bike path and the Broad Street sewer?
I think the answer to that currently is that we are, the plans are going to be that we are going to improve any drainage ditches that are along there. Um, perhaps in our next meeting, we can address it specifically what you mean. I don't know if you mean an, an additional inlet. It's extremely tricky to add any new storm drain and inlets along this corridor due to the, uh, what is immediately underneath the location of the, uh, um, two existing aqueducts were built. One, the new one is over a hundred years old and the old ones, I think, a hundred and years old. And they're brick sewers, uh, that carry the raw water to the Del Carle reservoir. So the location underneath of these is, uh, is a main driver on a lot of our, uh, what we can and can't do as far as, uh, storm drain and storm drain pipes.
Uh, this is Clive Bear. Uh, you did, the county did manage to do it once between sixty-five forty-one and sixty-five forty-five Broad about twenty, twenty-five years ago, more or less.
Yeah, so perhaps there's something we can do to take advantage of that.
Okay, um, next question. What is the general timeframe for this project?
Um, our end of design, um, scheduled for October of twenty-twenty-three. And start of the construction would be on December of twenty-twenty-four. And substantial completion, we are looking for November of twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, uh, next question. Uh, will the plans incorporate a potential bike pedestrian connection to the American Legion Bridge?
That is not in this scope, this segment's scope. No.
Uh, okay, next question. As we wait for the construction of this trail, can we have the current trail uh, swept once or twice a month?
I don't know the frequency of the sweeping, but we can definitely, uh, put in a request and to our highway services and also anybody, uh, you know, if you have a, a maintenance request anywhere, you know, along the trail or anywhere else within the county, you know, dial three-one or three-one-one, get it done or, um, you know, you can also email the three-one-one in your service request.
Okay, would somebody please describe the barriers along the bike path where barriers are necessary? Will they be solid material or flexible? How high will they be? Will a bike safety expert be involved in selecting and placing the barriers?
So, yes, uh, the, the barrier, correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, do you want to describe the barrier or it's a concrete barrier that is, uh, minimum six inches high. Um, and it will have some flex posts on top of it. That's, but that's mostly for And it will have some flex posts on top of it. That's, but that's mostly for uh just being able to see it. But it won't be a flex, just a flex post, but it'll have a concrete median uh type barrier, kind of like a curb. And it was two foot width, is that correct?
Correct. In areas where there is a barrier called out because of a constrained section between and not being able to provide that full five-foot grass buffer, we are looking at something very similar, exactly, actually exactly as Dan had provided in his comments. So having something that is essentially that curb so that there is a physical barrier of not just being able to drive straight over it, having the flexible posts on top of it to provide a greater visual um aspect to it as well as being able to see through it. There are other areas that we are looking at, at um some walls as we are trying to minimize different slopes and uh minimize different impacts along slopes or around utility poles. And so those are the different styles that we are looking at as far as having um the various experts involved. That's what our team is between both our consultant team as well as individuals within the county to taking a look at how these are placed, where they're placed and ensuring that we're using the most effective barrier possible for this location based on the constraints we have. Both with the width of the, with of the roadway and width of the available space as well as any depth for installation. As Dan has noted uh with those two aqueducts in this area, we are very cognizant of what we're placing and how deep that we can go if we are in fact having to dig down and excavate at all in order to put any barriers in.
Okay, great. Um, at the merge with the DC sidewalks, could you please place an at-grade ramp for cyclists to seamlessly transfer onto the DC streets? This is necessary as the DC sidewalk is narrow, badly buckled and broken and is hazardous to ride upon. So I guess the question is, will there be an ADA ramp um for the cyclists to transition?
Yeah, that's a detail that we can consider, um, whether it's immediately at the end or is it at perhaps someplace prior to the end. We can look into that.
Will cyclists need to ride on the roadway during construction?
Would, would you like me to?
That's a very good question. I think that you want to take a shot at that, Jennifer.
Sure. As we're working towards the, moving these plans forward, maintenance of traffic and that talks about not simply vehicular traffic, but how do we maintain pedestrians and bicycles as well? We are looking to the full plans for that at this time for our next submission. There is some expectation that, yes, we will have some bicyclists within the roadway as a detour plan. And some of this, we will simply have closed sections. So of course bicyclists have the right of way within the state of Maryland to also share the road and legally share the road with vehicles and for pedestrians. There will be some rolling closures simply because we don't have a facility on the other side of the roadway to be able to divert individuals to. And so we will be looking at how this is also being implemented in phases so that it is rolling closures of this pathway, of the existing pathway as we are improving it into the proposed facility.
Okay, why is the county not using this project to provide a real connection to the Capitol Crescent Trail?
It's just simply out of the scope. Uh, the, the existing connection will be looked at for improvements, but there's not not an additional connection as part of this scope.
Okay, that's the last question I have.
Well, well, if there are no further questions, I want to thank everybody uh for their participation. Your feedback is invaluable to us. And uh, I know we have a, a couple of follow-up items that we will uh meet with uh certain people. Um, and I don't know, is Michael still on or is Michael? Here's the contact information. Thank you, Michael, for hosting this public hearing.
Yeah, so just so that everyone knows, um, we're going to conclude the hearing uh in recognition of the fact that all the questions have been answered and we will keep the record open for two weeks. So comments and written testimony are due by, I believe that's April, yeah, April twelfth at six P M. On my notes, the date's a little bit different. And additional written testimony may be submitted by email and must be received by the close of this hearing record. And the submission should be sent to Yesman Ismaili, project manager at Yesman Ismaili at Montgomery County, M D dot gov. Or using the online comment form on the project website at the uh link that you see there, H T T P S uh colon front slash, front slash W W W dot Montgomery County, Maryland dot G O V, front slash D O T dash D T E front slash projects, front slash MacArthur, segment three. And we very much thank everybody for participating with the questions and for the comments. And as of now, the public hearing is now concluded. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.